Welcome to everybody, alright, so let's go ahead and get started. You know, this is our first town hall meeting in the spirit of the election cycle. I thought we should have a town hall meeting. Unfortunately, Will Flesser was busy, he's not be able to moderate, so we're gonna have to settle for just me, myself and I. But, one of the things about the town hall that I like is that it's really free form, right? Because, um, you know, you can stick a quarter of me, I'll talk all night, but really, I love the interaction with the audience and questions. When I do this live, it's a lot easier because I can read the body language and I know when I'm losing them. So, it's a, it's a question of, uh, you know, if you feel that, uh, I'm getting off topic here, please, uh, please let us know in the comments. Now, uh, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna open with a brief opening statement that's gonna be sounding political in nature, but if you keep, please bear in mind that we're talking about Access and SQL Server. And then, I have a, uh, a few things I wanna share with you guys. There's some, uh, great resources. And then, we'll go into the town hall meeting where we'll be handing out the mic and the audience. And, um, unlike Trump, we're not gonna kick you out if you start protesting, alright? I only ask that you let me speak in response to your protest, that's all I ask. Alright, so, uh, we're not doing any pledges either, we're not gonna raise our arms and salute and, uh, do any pledges for voting here either. So, um, you know, I like to, uh, talk about Access in general and where Access is going and how, what I've seen, uh, in terms of, uh, my interactions with the Microsoft, and one of the things that you may not be aware of, and you probably don't because you're not an Access MVP is, we have had a complete overhaul of the Access team at Microsoft, and I think that's a good thing, I really do. One of the things that happened was, uh, one of the team managers actually contacted IT Impact, which is the name of their company here in Chicago, and she requested, uh, do I know any clients that she can visit and just see firsthand what, uh, how they use Access in the company. Imagine my, my, my jaw dropping when she called me, right? And she said she wanted to see one of my, one of my clients and be able to interact with her. So, we sent her up to, actually it was Robert, Robert who's on the phone here, a consultant for IT Impact, Senior Access Consultant, was one of his clients, and she went out there and sat down with him and they explained how to use Access, and they said, you know, Access was the best thing to slice bread, but it so happens for this particular client, we save them hours and hours of work every month. And so, it was really quite the experience for people to hear that from the client. Yeah, so that's very heartening, and, uh, we do, they do, um, have frequent meetings with us, and, um, and we have one coming up here soon, so I'm hoping to see the vision. But, uh, you know, I emailed, uh, we have this, uh, private email group that goes out to every Access MVP in the world. And, one of the things that I did was tried to make a case for Access and the future of Access. And the fact of the matter is, the product is poised for a major impact in those companies that can leverage Access. I said, "Look, you know, you've got the opportunity to shape the future of this product for the next five, ten, fifteen years. When you have a new team in place like we have now, just thinking about the features, you know, be that, uh, future of Access web apps or be a feature client." And one of the biggest things they walked away with last November, we had our MVP conference, you may have heard me say this, they're gonna go back to the desktop client and prove it, and that was so, it was like lifting a two thousand pound weight off my chest because, uh, you know, I really was upset by the fact that they had to start the client that said, "No, it's mature enough, we're not gonna invest on that, that's old stuff, we're not interested." And so, you know, my blood would boil when I go to the Access MVP conferences in prior years, and I even blogged about the fact that I would not hear, I would, there would be no applause in that room. We would be, we had the Word guys on the left and the Excel guys on the right, and you would hear these applause, these cheers goes up every time they would introduce a new feature to those MVPs, there was no such thing happening with the Access group. And so, the fact of the matter is, you have to capture the lightning, I told them. You have to make this, this is your moment, right? And before, it's too late, and when is it gonna be too late? Well, the fact is that there is no other desktop database that comes even close to Access when it comes to market penetration. There just isn't. You know, you have a ton of this out there, like Alpha Anywhere, and, uh, there was another one on the Mac, FileMaker Pro, and, you know, that's it. And so, maybe several obscure variations on that. And so, the fact is, I think that's one of the issues, the fact that there is no major competition. I can assure you that if Google came out with a, uh, web-based database system, right, they already have Word compatible system, they have an Excel compatible system, but if Google came out with a database system that allows developers to create forms, reports, store data, have a relational database, be able to store that data in the Google infrastructure in the cloud, and have the power of that Google engine behind us, that was truly the problem of groundbreaking. They haven't done that yet, and I don't, for one, don't know of it. But, uh, last year's April Fool's joke, if you ever had a chance to go back to my blog and see it, Lucy might be able to post a link here of Robert, but if you didn't see it, in my last, uh, last April Fool's joke I did, uh, Google buying Access. It was a tongue-in-cheek, it was a tongue-in-cheek, uh, uh, April Fool's joke because obviously, uh, that would never happen. So, um, you know, I am, the future of Access, I think, is better now. And so, I compare that to the clock, that time, you know, you had these scientists that came out with the nuclear war clock, and I think we're like, what, ten minutes away from midnight, midnight's nuclear war? And during the missile, Cuban Missile Crisis, it was closest to midnight that we've ever happened. And so, I think, you know, that's the thing with Access, I think we, you know, we were able to get away from midnight with this new group, and I'm hoping to hear great things from them in terms of where we're going with the product and how it's, uh, gonna go from here. I'm a big believer in the desktop model, and, uh, we submitted a whole host of, uh, of, uh, suggestions to the Access team. That's one of the advantages of being an Access MVP, that's why I urge you guys to do that. And so, one of the things that when I hire you as a consultant at the firm, as a consultant at the firm, the first thing I tell you is, we gotta make you an Access MVP. And so, I already have two on staff, myself and Ben, and, you know, we're working on Robert being an Access MVP, and, you know, it just, it just allows you to submit these kind of ideas, interact with the Access team, get some free software, uh, have some wonderful experiences. Alright, and the other aspect of this is that, um, you know, there were a ton of suggestions, right? And so, we went through some exercises, some stuff was very archaic because you always got those fringe people who just throw stuff out there, you just gotta wonder what kinda feature they're looking, we're even talking about. I couldn't understand some of the features they were talking about. Somewhere, a lot were very popular, you know, one of the things that I suggested is, a connection object in Access that would not require having no DBC drivers for SQL Server, have it baked in directly into it. Now, if you ever want, if you ever wanna see that in, uh, real life, you can download the Power BI Desktop Client, and that Power BI Desktop Client, you can go to powerbi.com, includes the connectivity you need to connect to SQL Server, 'cause I just installed it in one of our, actually one of Robert's clients as well, he's working with, and then they created some, um, some dashboards for this. And so, um, you know, you, you, I, I thought I had to install the SQL Server native client, and I didn't have to. So, why can't we have that kinda same experience with Access, right? Why can't we have that? And, so it's really disappointing when we don't have that, and then that allows you, see, here's what happens. In a typical Access with SQL Server application, you may have twenty link tables, right, thirty link tables, a hundred link tables, I mean, we've done solutions where we've had close to a hundred link tables, that's a lot of tables. Not only that, but the Access program, data, data engine, so let's just simply have a typical order header, order details form, right? Where it's an order entry database, and you've, you load the order form, you hit the top of the form is the order header table, and then you get details of what was ordered against that order number, right, uh, there are all the different items on there. Well, if you open the form like that in Access, it's gonna open multiple connections to SQL Server, just that one form. You multiply that times all the people on the network that are using the application, now you're looking at dozens, if not hundreds, of connections to SQL Server. That's a lot of network traffic unnecessarily, if you ask me. And so, one of the things that we do is, we, uh, we talk about easy ADO DB, which you can find here, tap into Power Easy ADO DB or Easy ADO DB, and one of the techniques that we use there is we use one single connection object in the backend code to follow all our, uh, connections with SQL Server, right? So, everything goes through that, just one connector, uh, queries, uh, past, not past the queries, but queries in code, record sets, uh, commands, right? Data we receive to, to, to the server goes through one connection because we don't wanna increase that bottleneck. And that's one of the beauties of, uh, Access Web, I mean, not Access Web, that was one of the ideal issues with, um, uh, ADP projects. And that was a lead fan onto the ADP bandwagon, man, I wish I would've jumped on board sooner. But, one of the advantages of ADP was, he had that, it was following everything through one connection, so no matter have you had four forms or ten forms open and three reports or four queries, you would look on the server and I would log into the SQL Server Management Studio on the server and I would see there was just one connection from each user. So, uh, Remen does have that code base, right, their ADP code base that they go back and tap into, they can rewrite it from the ground up. And I think Power BI is a roadmap that they can use in order to, uh, do that. So, I need to double check though, um, if Power BI installed the SQL Server native client while it was, and so, I may have done that, uh, but I just finished installing it now, I came, I came over to this meeting and I need to check on it, but if it doesn't, that's something I'm gonna suggest to the, to the Access team is, look at how Power BI did it, how it connects to multiple sources without having to install additional hard, uh, additional, um, additional drivers, right? So, uh, one of the things that, uh, I also see in terms of Access is, you know, we, um, we continue to be amazed at the flexibility of the product. And so, it seems like lately we have clients that want to extend the investment they made in Access to the web. And so, that happens when you incorporate SQL Server in your solution. So, that's one of the things that when we, when I go sell something to a new customer, right, I usually say, okay, I usually ask them, I say, "How many users you got? Is it, uh, five users, ten users, twenty users? Anything above three, three to five, I'm already thinking SQL Server Express." And the way I sell them on that is two things, first of all, three things actually. Uh, number one is the stability, right, where you, you can add on users and it's not gonna corrupt the data, it's just not. SQL Server is never gonna corrupt on you, whereas a pure Access solution, many of you have experienced over the years Chinese characters, missing data, you know, blowing files, all the guarantee that go way out the door when you have SQL Server Express. Second aspect of that is, uh, the, uh, ability to, uh, extend that data to the web, once it's in SQL Server, then you can create a website that can tap into that database and have a web server in place and be able to extend that to the web server. For example, if you have a, again, a client, a newer order entry system, clients can log in via the web and see those orders on the client's website as well, and then the employees in-house are interacting with Access, whereas the people outside the enterprise are using the Access portal, I mean, the, the internet portal, the web portal, right? So, that's a dot net application that we would design that's connected to the SQL Server. And then, the last thing is security, 'cause I still, to this day, I still walk in a lot of places where I still see sensitive data such as HIPAA and, and, uh, credit cards and social security numbers being stored in Access. Now, I realize that, I'm retreading here on topics we talked here in the past, but I think it's important that you've got the tool set in place, if you're a, a consultant, be able to go out and sell your services to your clients and be able to say, you know, um, these are the reasons why you should do that. And so, I wanted to just, uh, you know, as I said, we talked about resources, one of the biggest resources I want you to keep in mind is to start here, accessexperts.com/starthere. And this, I, you know, to this day, I still come to this page, like, if I need Client Eleven drivers, I kinda start here and I download the Client Eleven drivers here, 'cause Microsoft make it so difficult to find these drivers on their websites, it's not like there's a page for the drivers, you have to go to the installation of SQL Server page, and then from there, uh, pick the SQL Server you installed, and then it gives you a series, it's just too way confusing, just way confusing, right? And so, we do that. Now, they, they have a ODBC driver for SQL Server, you gotta be careful, that's not the one you want, because that one does not support ADO DB. Now, uh, they're saying the ADO DB is going away, uh, for now, who knows when that's gonna happen. For now, we're gonna continue using ADO DB, and I'm at least a bit concerned about not using it because we've, we got a huge investment in it, but eventually we're gonna have to transfer, transition over to DAO and using pass-through queries in order to accomplish the things that I think that we accomplished with, uh, ADO DB, it was so darn, so much more darn, uh, convenient. So, we may have to reformulate the easy ADO DB to easy DAO so that we can, um, have the technology platform in place that's compatible with Microsoft Vision. Uh, the other aspect of this, uh, is the easy ADO DB, which I already saw, that's amazing. So, hey, uh, this week, one of the biggest things is SQL Server for Linux, look at this, I'm gonna go ahead and paste this into your chat, so if you wanna go into chat and, um, follow along with this, you have this link. Alright, so first one, accessexperts.com/starthere, let me give you that one too. And that's in the chat, so just open the chat in, um, in, uh, WebEx. But, uh, one of the things is, big announcement this, this, uh, this week, it's all over the web, you may have heard about it, SQL Server for Linux. And, you know, if you look at this stuff, uh, they don't talk about SQL Server for Linux until you get all the way past all this stuff, like, twenty sixteen, all the features twenty sixteen, and then it starts talking about Linux. And this is, this is, uh, typical Microsoft vaporware, 'cause there's still nothing there. This is all press announcement saying, "We're gonna, we're gonna work on SQL Server for Linux, guys," and it should've come out, I don't know, maybe next year, mid twenty seventeen, we'll get around to it. And so, the fact of the matter is, they got nothing. The, they, they sent out, they sent out this press release, they have nothing to we get to, there's nothing for us to look at, and, uh, you know, we don't know how much this is gonna cost. I mean, think about Linux, people are so used to paying what? Nothing, right? MySQL is free, Apache server is free, all maintained by the community. And so, I would think that they would offer SQL Server for Linux free, a variation of that with the SQL Server Express, which is also free, but on the Windows side, right? And so, um, lots of buzz about this announcement. I, for one, think it's vaporware, you know, I'll believe it when I see it, kind of a thing, approach I'm taking. The fact of the matter is, it would be great if we can have SQL Server for Linux, because a lot of times what we do here at IT Impact is, we have PHP developers on staff, and it's a less solution, right, it's using Apache, but we then install SQL Server drivers in our Apache, uh, virtual machine to be able to connect back to a SQL Server database. And there's some really great stuff that we do in PHP that we can't do it on that, PHP is easier to develop with and some, some certain issues, and, uh, so we do sometimes do both things. So, we got PHP developers and stuff, that, that developers and staff, X developers, and some of these X developers are PHP developers, so it just went, makes it really good to be able to grab somebody from our staff, be able to design, not just the X side, but the website. So, this is encouraging, we'll see where it goes with that. Another thing I wanna encourage you to do is to sign up for Brent Ozar's, uh, blog, brentozar.com/blog, or you can go to brentozar.com, click on the blog link here, and then, um, go in here. So, I get these via email, I sign up, I subscribe, the subscribe link, and Brent is a Microsoft SQL Server Master, Certified Master. And there's only a few in the world, and unfortunately, they stopped offering that certification, but it's very competitive, you can read this, this story, and now he become a, uh, uh, SQL Server Black Belt, uh, level ten, ten, and, uh, see how he got to it. They no longer offer that, they may have something similar. I don't intend to be a SQL Server MVP, and I always tell people, I'm not a SQL Server expert, I'm just an expert in the interaction of Access with SQL Server. But Brent's got some really good stuff on his blog, uh, this is how I keep up with, uh, SQL Server tuning, um, issues, when you sign up, you get emails from him in terms of, uh, interesting articles around the web, and just a great resource for me to stay up to date what's happening out there. There are other SQL Server blogs, so if you know of any other one that you're following, please let me know in the comments or speak up now in terms of that. But, uh, I, I happen to like Brent, I actually met him last weekend at SQL Saturday here in Chicago, so that's me here, SQL Saturday in Chicago, have a nice little table there with, uh, IT Impact and, and I had the, the wall painted red so it matches my banner and my desk. Alright, and so, it was a wonderful opportunity, we had four hundred attendees here in Chicago, and, uh, I purchased a table, it wasn't, uh, that, uh, cheap, but I think it was worthwhile, and I actually, uh, gave away a little drone here, as you can see, that was my raffle prize, a little drone here, indoor drone. I got these at, uh, at McQuarre Place. We are hiring a C E O that net programmer, so if you know of a great C E O that net programmer, who can do this. And this was my topic, I was, I, they asked me to speak, uh, last minute at, uh, on the topic of how to consult, start a consulting practice from home. And that's a topic that's also near and dear to my heart because, you know, a lot of problems there, a lot of times you have consultants, and they have people who are X developers who wanna strike it on their own, right? They're currently working for somebody, or they work on contract work, and they wanna be able to start their business, and they just can't, they don't have the skill set. How do I go about, uh, um, finding people? How do I go about, um, marketing planning? But, uh, what's it gonna cost me to be a consultant? And so, I answer all those questions, and one of the things that I do is, we have this discover the power of your data phrase and that trademark that I just love, and actually, you own discoverthepowerofyourdata.com, and, uh, we just hired a part-time marketing person in the organization, and we wanna be able to promote that website, you know, that, uh, it's neutral, right, technology agnostic, it's not gonna, there's nothing about Access on that, well, they might be right now, but we're gonna probably find two that doesn't include it, where it's technology agnostic, not talking about SQL Server, not talking about Access, but rather, it's for the general public that we can reach out and expand our brand through other revenue streams in Chicagoland area. And so, I do encourage you to check out sequosaturday.com, they have them all over the world, in Italy, here in the US. You can go to sequosaturday.com and be able to look for upcoming events as well as search, right? So, if I put in Italy, 'cause I know Giorgio's, uh, if I'm coming here on the phone with us from Italy, uh, there isn't anything there, so sorry about that. But, uh, I may be able to see Europe and see if that shows up. Well, you know, all global regions, right, so I have that to see what happens. So, you know, if I go Europe, Middle East, yeah, let me clear this out, so Europe, Middle East, uh, Africa, so that's a great, uh, a great excuse to go to, there's one in Vienna, coming up, Belgium. Uh, these are, you know, the nice thing about Europe is all very close, right? You would think that, you know, Vienna is actually very close to, um, Italy, it's just a train ride away, so you can do that and be able to participate, and then there's one, they, they plan these way ahead of time. So, one of the things I would encourage you, if you're an Access consultant, is to speak at these events, right? So, say for example, you're interested in, uh, one of these, like Paris, you would go there, and, uh, here, you would go to the speakers page, and they still have, um, speakers that, uh, they're still looking for speakers, so they'll say, "You can apply," right? Call for view closes Friday, March eighteenth, so here, you have to complete a speaker profile, and then once you complete that, then you can submit your session, and it doesn't have to be technical, in my case, I submit sessions on how to, how to be a, um, a consultant, right? But, uh, a lot of times people have this hunger for Access with SQL Server, 'cause nobody else talks about that, these Sequels Saturdays, nobody else, right? And so, usually it's just me talking about Access and how optimize Access with SQL Server, how to do this, so I would encourage you to, uh, speak at these events, and it does help you in becoming an Access MVP. You know, it really, uh, is a good event, usually what happens, they have multiple tracks, so for example, if we go to the event home here, and I go to, actually, let me just go back to the website, sequosaturday.com, pull up the Chicago event that we recently had, uh, that we were talking about here. Uh, Paris, oh, Paris, we were always at Paris. Alright, let's see, uh, Canada, US, uh, past the event, there you go, Chicago. So, here in Chicago, if you look at these, uh, let's see here, session, schedule, they had a lot of tracks here in Chicago, probably one of the biggest Sequels Saturdays, they have four hundred people here in attendance, who got breakfast and then they got lunch, and all they paid was ten dollars to register because a lot of the sponsors pay for this stuff. So, they have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight tracks, spanning the whole day in Sequel Saturday, a wide range of trop, topics, right? Cybercharge, transaction laws, Western SQL Server twenty sixteen. This was an amazing chat that I was able to catch, uh, sometimes they have the PowerPoint you can download, like this guy's got the PowerPoint, right? Infrastructure for the DBA. But, one of the things that is, because I was a speaker, and here I am, down here, all the way to the bottom, I was in room two fifteen, and that was me, wish you could live the glamorous consulting life. One of the things they do is, if you speak, is they invite you to dinner the Friday before, a lot of people fly in, they travel and, right, so they like to, as a gra, gesture gratitude, "Hey, uh, let's, uh, come out to the Sequel Saturday Speaker Dinner," so I was invited to be as part of the Speaker Dinner. And one of the things that, uh, I was able to do, let me see if I can find him here, it's Thomas with, uh, Thomas Grocher, designed SQL Server HR, HR infrastructure to meet the SLA, right? So, I'm gonna download his presentation, 'cause I did not have to see his presentation. But, uh, one of the things that, uh, Thomas does is, he's, he's, he is an amazing guy in terms of what he can do for you, in terms of architecting SQL solutions. And so, one of the things was, he got hired to, uh, design solutions for a European customer that wants to, to be able to track, uh, stock transactions, but just not any stock transactions. They wanted to track any stock in the globe and see all transactions in stock, and they wanted to see all those transactions in stock in a fraction of a second. At the table on Friday, he was going on and on about how he architected this, and he says, "Well, basically, um, you would need sixty-four terabytes of memory, in-memory on the SQL Server, and you would have to have, uh, twenty-four virtual machines," right? Because everything is going virtualized now, you've got, uh, with multiple clusters, right? So, imagine this monster, this, the big iron that you would have to involve, they have twenty-four virtual SQL Server, window, window servers, and then within each one of the server, you have SQL Server, and then, uh, have sixty-four terabytes of memory, so you can store and be able to call up the entire financial transaction history of a stock at any given moment, and it's a history of man within a fraction of a second.[1697.13] And so just the PCs alone that are gonna be connected to the solution have to have ten network cards. Ten network gigabit cards. The PC that's gonna be like the PC on your desktop, would have to have ten network cards. All plugged into the network, gigabit cards, just so you can get all that data bundled from the SQL server. Because obviously, the, uh, if you're looking at, uh, a terabyte of data in a fraction of a second, you can't just go have one network card. You would need to be able to distribute the load across ten month cards on the PC and be able to receive all that data from SQL server so that you can do the analysis. And, uh, so, you know, I started giving him a hard time. I said, well, wow, that's great. And, uh, he tells me, first of all, he tells me he doesn't think this thing will ever get built. I mean, it was just ridiculous, he overengineered based on the requirements they gave him. And so he, he thought that it would never get built. But one of the things that, um, one of the things that, uh, I ask him, I joke, and says, at what point do you think the machine would become sentient? You know, do you think it'll be twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen before it? So I can be ready with my, uh, survivor supplies and be able to have enough water at hand and all that. But, uh, he, he, he told me, he flat told me, it's just not gonna be, it's just not gonna be. So this is an interesting guy. This guy, I mean, this guy, he, he, he's like the Einstein. You know Einstein with the hair and all, it's just like him with the accent, the German accent? You, I mean, you just, you just can't believe something. Well, he was talking about papers. He likes to write a lot of papers. You know, and, uh, this is his firm, Entity Data. And then, um, the topic I wa- I didn't talk to him about, but, you know, he's another guy. You stick a cord and him will talk all night. And so he would, uh, frequently come to my table and, and start discussions on what he does. And one of the things that he did was, he worked on a Japanese project where, um, he received some specifications from the customer and the specifications were wrong. And he, everybody working on the project knew they were wrong. They were impossible to meet. But because he couldn't go back to the original requestor to ask him to change specifications because he would lose face in the rest of the company, they just had to design it the way he asked for it. And think about that. Here you have a project that's involving Thomas, who's quite expensive. His hourly rate, I'm sure, is in the two hundred fifty thousand hour. Spending weeks designing and then, uh, fighting with IT, and I'll talk about in a minute, to get things done, all becau- and not being able to change the project parameters even though they're wrong because some guy is worried about losing face and, and committing suicide because if he does. I mean, think about that for a minute. You know, and then you wonder why Japan is in the recession. But the fact of the matter is that he, uh, he designed solutions where you can have an amazing response back from the server. Now, a lot of you may have heard that sometimes when they implement these high-end SQL service solutions, they use FANs, which is a storage area network. And basically, think of FANs as a bunch of hard drives, like the one we saw in the first slide here. Not this, this is old technology. But here, think of that, uh, as a, let me see, where the hell, I saw that, here. This, right? So you have, well, that's a chart. It's something similar. You have little slots and every hard drive is a hard drive. And so you may have, you know, a hundred, uh, a thousand terabytes in the FAN. And then you have SQL server reaching out through the network, going through the bus of the PC and the server, then going through the switch and then going through the, through the FAN bus and then retrieving the data to bring it back to SQL server. And so one, a lot of times what he does is tell the customer, you just spent, he had a particular customer that just spent one point two million dollars on a FAN and he told them that they just, they just, they just can't use it. And so the C I O says, what do you mean I can't do? I just spent one point two million on a thing. Says, if you want results that are fast enough, it's basically impossible to move that data from the FAN to SQL server to the website in order to be able to store up the data fast enough for your requirements you ask in this project. And a lot of times, and, you know, a couple of years back, that's what HADUP started. HADUP is in-memory, uh, storage of data. Because a lot of people want to see that data faster and faster these days. You know, when you're going, when you're, when you're, uh, high-frequency trader or there's a lot of applications where you need that data in-memory. You don't need that on a hard drive. You don't want SQL server to wait, request the data from a local hard drive, right? Then, um, read it from the local bus on the PC and then put it in memory and then finally serve it up to this web server who in turn will have to put it on the page for you to see. And so he's, he, he tells me, a lot of times he has to fight with the IT department. This, of course, can take weeks or months. Because they're resistant and, you know, and he actually proves to them that the speed of your FAN can be the best in the world, but because of the physical prop- physical properties of electrons going through your infrastructure, coming back, you just can't use your FAN. You're better off using a, uh, solid-state drive on the SQL server itself and that would be faster, run circles around, right? So how much faster? Well, a, a FAN may be, uh, a gigabyte per second. Whereas a, uh, locally stored, these are just example numbers. He told me exact numbers, I forgot. But just to give you an example, a FAN might be a gigabyte per second. Whereas a local FAN, uh, solid-state drive on the SQL server would be fractions of a second. And that's the major difference when you're talking about life or death situations with these high-speed, high-availability solutions that you need there. And so I started talking about eBay and Facebook and Amazon. These are, these are properties that, uh, we use every day, right? I use them every day. I says, well, how does all this architecture happen? He says, you'd be surprised, one, a lot of that stuff is not as quick as needed. You don't need to be quick, right? Think about it. Do you really care that you have a posting from your aunt on Facebook the minute she presses the enter key? That's okay if that posting shows up thirty seconds later or one minute later, right? So when you're looking at your Facebook feed, that data doesn't have to be immediate. So if it takes the infrastructure of Facebook to commit that transaction back to their database in the cloud a minute, two minutes, nobody cares. Nobody cares how long it takes. It may show up on your feed immediately, but it's not gonna show up on anybody else's until thirty seconds later, a minute later, right? And so the same thing with Google. Google has these web crawlers that crawl through the web collecting data. And that's how they can search for results because they have a database in the backend. Well, the web crawlers are posting transactions back to the database. At the same time, you have users using the browser to search for database for the websites. And the correlation there is the same way. They don't care if the transaction or web crawler is backlogged by a few million records. So what? You don't, it's gonna take you, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it'll be a minute before you, you just see that, that story that was posted about Kim Kardashian on the, uh, Gawker website. Big deal, right? So you can't, when you do a search on Kim Kardashian, oh, those searches will be included because guess what? The website was crawled thirty seconds ago and it still hasn't been committed to the database. Nobody cares. And same thing with Amazon. They had changed the prices on their products, they'd add products, they'd remove products. It's not mission critical to see that immediately. It's mission critical that you, that you can get the order in, right? When I press the button to submit my order, they get it, that's mission critical. But the aspect of listing products and changing prices, it's okay if it takes a fraction of a second. But they're not gonna build infrastructure, be able to handle that data stream. And so one of the things that we developed at IT Impact, this is the last thing I'm gonna talk before we start to the questions, is tokenboards.com. This is the same product that, uh, when we launched, we bootstrap it, which bootstrap means we self, we self-bynessed it. And this is a firmware data that goes, comes and goes. Now, I'll give you an example of that. I'm gonna log in here to the, to the cloud. And I'm gonna quickly create a new board. This is using SQL Server in the backend. And I'm gonna pick a template. And what I'm gonna take, pick is for the dock schedule, right? So I have multiple docks in my, at my company and I have different trucks waiting to unload and load, right? So I'm just gonna look at here, I'm gonna say SQL Access with SQL Demo. Great. So one of the things I think about this is, let's say for example, um, somebody, there's this, uh, this dock server, right? That's available. So if I want, I can go ahead and move this, I can call the truck driver. Says, you know, this is low, go ahead and go to dock server. Don't worry about dock one, just with this. So I just moved it and I could've done this in Excel, but the problem with Excel is I had to make the space for the cell and then it dragged, uh, that back over. It's time to, so here I need to change immediately, then it's done. It's done. But more importantly, once this, once this part car, once this truck gets unloaded, it's gone, right? So here, I'm gonna right-click and I'll delete. That transaction is gone and that transaction is no longer stored in the database. Why? Because nobody cares that on March eighth, at, uh, seven fifteen PM, we unloaded a truck on dock number seven. Nobody cares. What we care about is, in the inventory transaction system, we have that dock and that, that inventory in our, in our database, right? That we do care. But this is for data that's, uh, not, that's transient. It's here today, gone tomorrow. And so it's one of the aspects that I, that's hardest to explain to my team, my development team about that. So this is a really nice product. I mean, we can move tokens around, I can, I can move columns around, I can drag columns around and, you know, like, and it's still under development, it's still in the beta, but eventually we wanna charge, uh, ten bucks for it. Ten bucks a month on a subscription-based model, right? So if you guys, uh, can, if you guys are familiar to me, can open that account for free and test it, provide feedback. I know I can, oh, here, I have the one one. So I can move this here and then I can move this column around. I gotta grab the, the, the squares. And this is something that's near and dear to me. Why? Because eventually you can represent a revenue stream that's outside the access with SQL Server consulting business. Right, right now, we are so good at what we do. Robert can take a project, finish it in a matter of weeks. I gotta have his next project lined up, right? It's not gonna take, you know, sometimes it does take a month. And he's actually working on projects for the last three months, but it's not gonna take him six months or twelve months. That's the nature of access. We quickly work on things. And so it's important for me as a SQL server to be able to keep the channel open with, uh, opportunities. My lead funnel full of opportunities so we can, when he finishes one, he can quickly go on to the next one. But if we sell this, right? If you think about it, if we sell this at ten bucks a pod to a hundred people, that's ten times a hundred, that's a thousand dollars of revenue coming in each month. If I can get a thousand people to give us ten bucks, that's ten thousand a month. And I think about that, if one of them leaves, it's only ten dollars a month, right? So if one of them just takes off, now I'm down to nine thousand nine, nobody cares. We're still gaining the bulk of money, revenue for subscription every month. That's the beauty of this, right? And so if I can get a thousand people to give me ten bucks a month, then we're looking at ten thousand dollars. If I can get ten thousand people to give me ten bucks a month, now we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. That's not chump change. And I gotta think that there's ten thousand people in this world who could use this product. People use it, right? Now, now, we use internally where each programmer has a, at the header. So Robert is here, I'm here, we have projects and our project management team moves project around. So because it's so easy, right? So if Robert, uh, can't grace this project in time, maybe we'll sign to another programmer. I mean, the, the users of this are endless. The other thing is, I can come in here and I use it for product lines, production lines. So I come in here and I do, um, here, production lines. So these are line one, line two. I have a factory right in China. And I'm here in Chicago. I'm the owner of the factory in China. Well, it's important to me as the owner, that I know that they're, what they're producing on each line, what they're producing, what they're working on, what day it is. So this is again, um, a tool that allows the owner here in the US to react to and work with the people in China. So here, for example, if I wanna be able to move this up here for this production line, so this is the next product to be used, then I can quickly do that and that's reflected already in China immediately. Now, usually people would do this with Excel spreadsheets. Why? Because I used to be a production manager. Most of my career, I've been a production manager, pharmaceuticals and food and so forth. And they'll use Excel spreadsheets. Well, the problem with Excel spreadsheets is you're emailing them back and forth, they become stale. We don't know which latest version. It's hard for people to work. And so then when Google came out with their version, online version, a lot of people switched over to Google. But again, still, not as easy to move things around as it is, like it is here. Priscilla's the person that we just hired to do the marketing stuff. So, please log in, please create a, uh, board. Let me know about your experience creating the board. Go through the sign-up process, send me a link, jsoro@itimpact.com. And let me know what you think about the product and so forth. Alright, so I just drank some water, now I'm ready to answer your questions. Who's got a question for me? Shoot. Comments? Question, observation?
Did you show any of the code behind it?
This is all done with PHP and SQL Server in the backend. And I wouldn't know exactly what the code is. I just have people that do this for me.
Okay.
You know, the PHP program, programming team and...
Very nice.
Thanks. I mean, if this comes out of the, I used to be a production manager at a pharmaceutical company in Chicago and I had the production schedule on my office on the magnetic board. So each one of these were small magnets with pieces of paper and I would write skincare to announce.
Right.
And I would have line one at the top and so forth. So it's an online magnetic board. So anything you can do with a magnetic board, you can do with this now. Share this board with other people and so forth.
Yeah, no, it's very good. Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this.
How much time would you say is put into this project?
Do you believe it took them three months to do this? I mean, it was amazing how fast he was able to get this done. It was just one programmer using PHP. He created this application for me and then we've been fine-tuning ever since. Like the next version, you'll be able to adjust the, uh, column width and the row height. And, uh, but, you know, I'm not comfortable charging ten dollars a month until I've had more people testing this. I'd like to be able to develop this and have a group of fifty testers, a hundred people doing the beta testing and, you know, I'm uncomfortable charging ten dollars a month if we haven't, uh, put it through its paces yet.
I would say nine ninety-nine.
Nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. That's what we wanna start charging for.
That's a lot cheaper than ten, yes.
Ten bucks, nine ninety-nine. And so eventually we'll link it with PayPal or some other payment system. And then we'll have your credit card and file, we'll just do the ka-ching every month. But more importantly, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the website itself, which, let me see if I can take you back to the website. Uh, we have some really nice possibilities. And one of them is, uh, the ability to have like an airport monitor here. You have these monitors here with the token board. And so we have a, uh, we have a setting in the token board that's billboard mode. And so once you do your billboard mode, it'll auto-refresh every thirty seconds. You don't have to log in, as long as you have the URL. So you can have that billboard mode running on the PC, right? These are all driven by PCs in the backend. And then, uh, you can have a shipping dock schedule. So one company wants, company calls up and says, hey, we have a lunchroom and we want employees to know what the dock schedule, what's happening, is the truck here or not here? Says, not a problem, we'll just, we'll just use this in billboard mode. We never end up doing anything with that company, but, uh, billboard when it came out of that. So if I come in here and I go into settings, let me see. Uh, save, uh, billboard mode, here it is. Activate billboard mode, I click on there. I can send an email, but more importantly, I can grab this link. And anybody who has that link can launch on the PC and not have to log in and see the bill, to see the bulletin, billboard in, um, the, the, the token board in, uh, as a, uh, read-only, right? So it'll be running twenty-four seven without having to log in or expire the session or anything like that. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot thought that went into this. So ask me how many people have opened accounts with token boards?
How many people have opened accounts?
Less than twenty-five.
Never heard of a token board before this.
Less than twenty-five people.
Yeah, I never even knew what this, you know, anything was like this, you know?
Less than twenty-five people. So that's my challenge, right? How do I get out the word, right? So we tried Facebook and Twitter. Even you guys who follow me, you have, you, you, and I, I actually shared it on my blog when it came out. I need to do a bit, we need to do a better job, better, better job. Now, when I went into Google AdWords, because you know, a lot of times, uh, you know, we get our, most of our leads are Google AdWords. And I advertised on simple production scheduling. I was getting hits and I was getting people to use the product and sign up and so forth. But it was costing me thirty-five dollars per person, so I had to stop doing that, you know, when it projected the cost versus... You know, and, you know, I don't mind paying thirty-five if they hang around, but, you know, we still haven't charged anything and...
How did you pick those?
It's like Shark Tank.
How did you pick those words?
Go ahead.
How did you pick those words?
Simple production scheduling?
Did you do the, uh, keyword search on AdWords?
Yeah, this is, uh, simple productions. Well, no, this is what I would think, somebody who might use my product would type in.
Well, there's a part on AdWords where you can go in and put in sample keyword phrases like that or just single keywords. And it'll show you the distribution of how many times they've been searched on and so forth. So what I do when I'm doing any kind of AdWords for a customer or whatever, is I do those searches and see what keywords in their industry are gonna bring up the most hits.
Oh, that's good. Do you know the tool, what is it called?
It's part of AdWords. You just go in and look up, uh, keyword search, uh, look at it, login real quick. But if you tailor your keywords properly, you can minimize your costs and, you know, get the hits you want. I, I never heard the term token board. So if you said you had token boards, I'd say, what? What the heck is a token board?
Right.
Yes. So this is my AdWords account. We, we spend a lot of money, we have different campaigns here. So now, if I go to, was it Tools?
Yeah, I believe so. Um, Keyword Planner.
Keyword Planner, okay.
What is it on top of you?
We just lost Italy.
(laughing) They need to put their SQL server on a, a fan, uh, SSD. Uh, yeah, go ahead and do that. You can put in, just say, uh, put in, uh, a token board. Uh, yeah, go ahead and do that, you can put in- just say, uh, put in, uh, a token board, that'd be interesting. And then, you- you know, you have targeting right now, you have, uh, you gotta change your targeting a bit, uh.
I think the dog needs to get walked.
It sounded like I'm having a problem there.
Sounds pretty unhappy.
Yeah. So, negative keywords none, right? So, then I could get ideas.
And you'll see the search volume trends there, and then you can further tailor that to what you want to have happen. So, you could see by month where the most searches are and stuff like that, and you can also, if you look over there at the bottom there, suggested bids, they'll show you which ones cost more and so on.
Token boards, token ones.
I'll play around with a bunch of different, uh, uh, keywords and keyword combinations and demographics and find, you know, get an idea of what might work the best.
So, let me put in a phrase here, possession scheduling. Scheduling tool. That should blow it up. Yeah, went up to twenty five thousand. Planning software, look at this, cost per bid, twenty one dollars.
That would be the actual keywords you'd use though, is planning software.
Yeah.
Or production planning software, or, you know, it shows you the- the- the choices there.
Look at the- look at these keyword values, they shot up.
Yeah, that's why you're paying so much.
Yep. Competition high, competition mean high, oh, boy. And so, it should become prohibitive.
Right, well, you might say that that's not gonna work because it is too cost prohibitive, exactly.
And that's why, I mean, I'm- I'm willing to pay when it comes to access, because I'm- I get the typical sales point, the average is between five and twenty five thousand dollars. So, I'm willing to pay twenty one dollars per click to get a five thousand dollar job, but I'm not gonna pay twenty one dollars to get a ten dollar customer every month.
Right.
Well, and you gotta look at your conversion rate, too.
That's true.
So, you know, if you're paying twenty one dollars per click and it's taking you ten customers, you're paying two hundred and ten dollars per customer, which, again, with that kind of contract, isn't necessarily a bad idea.
Let me see if I can bring it up here, so I can see it, should still be up here at the- I mean, I was getting a good decent return on that.
Well, sometimes you can take things, too, and if you further, you know, refine them, they- they get a lot less costly.
Yeah.
So, for example, you said production planning software, you might say, um, uh, dock planning software, or something like that.
Correct.
Or just planning software.
Or just planning software. That's more general, but I'm saying, a lot of times, you get more specific, the prices go down because not as many people are using those keywords.
Yeah.
Good point.
So, you might take a combination of four or five more specific ones, pay a lot less per click, and get a better- just as good a result.
I think this is- this went through the process, right? There was magnetic board, online magnetic board, and I would get thirty two clicks on magnetic board, and they- and that ten thousand impression, point three one percent, and these thirty two clicks cost me fourteen dollars.
Right. So, that's not too bad, if you're converting, you know, it depends- it depends on how many of those you're converting.
Yeah, so forty nine, um, and the average position, so here, I got forty nine clicks on magnetic board. So, a couple of things that we're gonna do, one of the things is, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna join eighteen seventy one, which is a startup incubator here in Chicago. And, um, it's very inexpensive, it's like three hundred bucks a month. And, you know, the last time I was there, I was there for a, uh, for a talk, and, um, I actually heard this guy talking, amazing talk. He's this guy Howard Toma, the CEO, unbelievable insights. But as I'm walking through the joint, they have post-it notes on boards, right? So, they have token boards, they just don't know it's token boards yet. They have all these post-it notes, and I think to myself, "Well, let's hope that there's no wind that comes along and just knocks all these notes off this board, because they would lose their position on the board." So, these guys, these people, all these startups have these post-it notes all over the place, they're my ideal client. And so, uh, one of the things I'm gonna do is join and be able to leverage that and, you know, hang out with these kids and see if I can, uh, I can get them to use, uh, token boards, so that we can get that, uh, market penetration we're looking for. And then, we're also doing this, uh, pub press releases, and that's what the, uh, marketing person I hired is gonna come in. Everything but AdWords, 'cause AdWords is just too prohibitive.
Now, one other thing, if you bring back up your sample, um, token board.
Sure. Let me see if I can bring that up. Uh, just log in again.
I like the billboard mode, by the way, that's- I could see, you know, potential applications for that. Now, one question I have i- is, how do you create new ones of those?
Who's this just talking, I'm sorry, who are you?
Todd, Todd Bennett.
Hello, Todd, thanks for joining, is this your first time?
Yes.
Great, what do you do?
Um, we- we provide technology services, but I'm a longtime programmer, so, uh-
With, uh, Access?
Done a lot of work in Access, yeah.
Oh, great, well, thanks for joining us.
The, uh, can you- how do you recreate, like, one of those blocks? Do you have to create it from scratch, or?
Oh, what you do is, you double-click on the block, and then you type, and you can give it different colors for the background color, and then click on accept, and now you got the block.
And can you copy one of those existing ones?
Yeah, you can copy, and then right-click and paste.
Okay.
I got you, man, keep- keep hitting me.
Yeah, I'm- I'm trying to think of how I would use this, uh.
Well, you know, that's the thing that, uh, if you do figure out in a innovative way, then I'd love to have your permission to use it as a template, because I figured, we- I- we had lots of templates, that we had one for tennis, but then the website's geared to production scheduling, so one of the things that we need to do is probably redo it and be more generic.
Where you could have dates, for example. I could see this being used even for, like, like, you're planning a seminar, okay? Which presenter is in which area? I mean, you could do all kinds of stuff.
Correct. And then, you can easily juggle the topics and the- and the presenters and the rooms and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
And one of- one iteration of this that we haven't explored yet, that I've always wanted to do, is the token itself represents another token board, so we can- you can actually type unlimited data here.
Gotcha.
So, now, you have a three D- you have a three D modeling system, right, where, but this, you have unlimited space, I could type as much as I want, it'll take it, right?
It's like a memo field.
Exactly, it's a memo field, so, but it only displays so much of it, right?
Right.
So, um, you know, the other aspect of this, that this might branch into another token board, and I still don't see how that would- might relate to conceshway with the use of the token board, but we'll see. So, Todd, please reach- are you- are we LinkedIn already, are you and I linked on LinkedIn?
No, I don't think we are.
Oh, please reach out to me.
The, uh-
One of the things you also might consider doing is, um, making this an upper level, uh, management, you know, it's something where they can see all the deliveries and all the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, dashboard, if you will.
Yeah, like an overview for, um, you know, so that they can go, you know, look at this, but, but, you know, management can just see everything that happens.
Correct. And so, that's when that's- they grew out of-
And I imagine it could link to an inventory system, right?
Yes, and that's the nice thing is that we can- we actually quoted the client, that client that wanted us to put the billboard mode in their- in their lunchroom, we quoted their twenty two thousand dollars to integrate with their existing ERP solution.
Yeah.
Because they were- they were, um, having problems with people, they- they have- they have a lot of docks.
Yeah.
They had twenty two docks, and the trucks were being lost in the shuffle, and the- the thing is, okay, here, the thing is, they created- they created Pepsi cans that go full of cans.
Yeah.
And when you sell cans to Pepsi, they don't wanna store the cans, and the person doesn't wanna store in their bowling plant. They want just-in-time delivery. So, what would happen is that, uh, they would miss the delivery, and Pepsi would ding them for a hundred thousand dollars because their production line was down waiting for these cans. And so, you know, and sometimes it baffles me, you have a hundred thousand dollar problem, and you can't spend twenty two thousand for me to solve it for you?
Look, that's a whole- that's a whole other discussion.
Yeah, yeah, really.
You know, businesses always complain they don't have enough money.
Oh, this would be great, you know?
They don't have enough clients, and they don't- they don't operate their business correctly. Another thing is, you might, uh, also be able to, like, take all of line four and move it to line five.
Oh, like, yeah, multiple tokens, that's coming in next version, I can select multiple, right now, I can only move-
Look, it's easy for me to talk, I'm not doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, probably- probably put her off just, uh, moving line four here.
Okay.
And- and then just moving that over here, and now it's on five, and then moving-
That's not bad, that's not bad, but you know, if you can do that, and the program-
And then moving the column itself over here.
Yeah, yeah, no, but if you can do what you just did, then- then you should be able to do it in programming, too.
Yeah, yeah, so I just- I just may move everything in line four to line five, but that's the good point.
Yes.
And then, the other thing is, the other thing is, you can export to Excel, so I can export this to Excel, and I can further do it, and there I can print.
Right.
I mean, it's- I mean, and this was all developed- it didn't take me a hundred thousand to do this, guys.
No, I understand, it's very nice.
You imagine- you imagine all these entrepreneurs in Silicon Valley who give millions of dollars, and at the end of the day, they just falter? If I had a million bucks, oh, my gosh.
The other possibility is, you're- you're telling them it's too cheap, sometimes people don't wanna buy something that's too cheap.
Well, I mean, we're talking about the SAS model, right? I mean, this is not the, uh, lead generation tracking system that-
No, no, I'm just saying, that companies, I mean, I had- I had a client, and, um, he merged with another client, and did not understand the concept of intellectual property, so part of the reason is, uh, they took my software, too. But it was okay, I got a second client. And the reason they didn't wanna use my software, they spent, I don't know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars building something that wasn't as good. In fact, in the meantime, they had to use my software, 'cause they couldn't get all the reports. But they specifically said that they didn't wanna use my software because it was too cheap.
It'd be interesting.
Yep. But there are a lot more, you know, people who are idiots than us.
These are the same guys who dismiss access offhand as Mickey Mouse.
Well, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And, uh, but they're- they have no problem spending one point two million dollars on ERP system that comes in over budget and, uh, delayed by a year, and it ends up only helping them eighty percent of the time.
Look, it's a whole other discussion, I- I was a Citibank, and I- they asked me to do a project plan to convert a project. And what I- and I did it, which is a waste, and I- and they came out, they looked at the- the numbers, two point one million. I said, "I- I can do it for free." "How can you do it for free, you know, two point million, you know, you just, you know, your project plan is two point-" I said, "I'm here as a consultant, what we'll do," they wanted to convert to Power BI or whatever, "we'll start converting all the reports over as people ask for them, uh, you know, it won't take me that long, and then at the end, we'll convert the input screens." "No, no, no, that's never gonna work." They spent six million dollars on a product that didn't work.
Oh, jeez.
It's pretty common, pretty common. I sometimes end my Citibank stories with, that's why they have a little red umbrella over their head now.
All right, well, look, this has been great, guys, I hope you enjoyed it, you guys enjoyed it?
This is a great product, yes, yes.
Enjoyed tonight's topic, we should probably do this at least once a year.
Yes, always a pleasure.
Absolutely, and so, um, I, uh, have a gift card in, uh, for twenty five dollars to Amazon, and the, uh, winner of this is gonna be Todd, Todd, very much, thank you very much for your comments.
Good.
And could you, uh, send me your email, so we can, you know, gift you the card- the card tomorrow? All right. Um, it's not always a pleasure, Linda got a- got a gift for me last week when I took her out to dinner, so don't feel bad for Linda.
I- 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 I'm happy that Todd's getting the card.
How many- how many pro- access programs does it take to find a dinner place?
Hmm, quite a few.
That was- that was fun. Well, it wasn't really, but-
Linda, I'm not gonna say what happened, because I'd be embarrassed.
Oh, it's okay, I- I got- I got lost yesterday trying to find my parking lot, which was across the street. I started- I went to a store and found you. And you were close, and I could do that, right?
I know, I know, we still love you anyway, Linda.
Personal experi- from personal experience, all right, this is really great, great, and, you know, conceivably, um, you know, uh, I may- I may wanna share some of my clients this. I mean, I wouldn't do it, you know, I would tell them to have you do it, but it's- it's really fabulous.
No, absolutely, sign up as many people as you can, help me out here, I'm dying here on the mine.
Sure, sure.
This is a great way to pay me back for all the hours you put in taxes, you're great, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. If I- I actually might know a couple already, too, and, um, one possible application, I don't know if you could tackle this industry, but it seemed to me like maybe restaurants, you know how they always do the- they do the, uh, orders? You know, they could submit maybe via something like this, have them out in the dining room and, you know?
Correct, correct, and so, one of the things is that when you do the drive-through at McDonald's, that's what they look at, token board. Let's see, talk about-
Also, beauty pa- not beauty, uh, beauty parlors.
Yeah, yeah, this could be chairs.
In fact, I did something very much like this for a beauty parlor.
Yep, this could be chairs, where you have tent chairs, and you gotta schedule the chairs.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and then, you know, sometimes somebody calls in sick, you wanna reschedule the, um, you know, people.
Mm-hmm.
So, you may wanna, where- where-
This is non-p persistent, right?
No, it's not persistent, yeah, exactly, it's the- for- the once you delete the token, the data's deleted.
Right, okay.
And so, um-
Yeah, but they- they kinda need to know it for the day, you know, like, who's coming in in an hour, they don't-
Yeah, somebody calls in late, you know, you could switch things around and-
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's a poor- it's a poor mass scheduling tool, basically.
Yeah, could you change the color of an existing token?
Yeah, you can go in here and-
You can maybe use a color coding system and say, "Okay, uh, Mary Jane is- is scheduled for nine o'clock, and then when she comes in, it turns it to orange, and now that means she's on site," or whatever.
Sure.
Yeah, I can see a lot of applications for this.
Yes.
It's very simple but powerful, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, that means a lot to me, guys.
Yeah, oh, excellent, very, very nice.
All right, well, look, I appreciate, uh, the great feedback, and we'll see you back here next month, and, um, soldier on, thank you very much.